Morning Helen, you're there now?
Morning, I made it. I'm having some connection issues, so we'll wait to see how long I stay here. But I made it, so sorry I'm late.
Not at all. Okay, okay, well, I think it is just about 11 o'clock. So we will make a start. Now, this is the first time we've done this. I don't know about the rest of you, but this is certainly a learning curve for me. I've been on a number of Teams and Zoom meetings, but always as a guest, never been in the chair. So please bear with me. It's a new experience for me and I will do my best. But if anybody sees me straying away from the rightful path, please feel free to shout and give me some helpful advice. That will be very happily received. Okay, so as I say, if we work on the basis of the members have their mics off, but their pictures on, I can't see any of the members at the moment. All I can see is a screen with Helen's initials on, so I don't know whether I need to do something different here. That's fine, I don't want to do that. Okay, well, we'll make a start and see how we get on. As I say, if you're waving and I don't respond, then I'm talking about members of the board. Please switch your microphones on and shout you want to make a point and we'll take it from there. Okay, well, we'll go back.
Sorry, just a second. It's Helen. And I can see all the members of the board, so if anyone is waving, then I should be able to see them. But also, we've got a couple of extra Democratic Service Officers in here to support, to make sure that nothing's missed.
Yes, they introduced themselves, so I'd welcome, yeah. So I think we, well, I asked them to introduce themselves, so I think, I think that was, okay. What do I need to click on? Because at the moment, I can't see anybody other than your initials, Helen. And I was seeing all the, I haven't done anything, so goodness, oh, hang on, what's this down here?
Chair, would it be helpful if I shared my screen? So because I can see everybody, so it might help for you.
Yeah, who is that?
It's Isabel.
Isabel, yes, please, thank you, if you can do that, if that helps.
Could I just, Chair, could I just suggest?
Who's this?
It's Dave.
Dave, yes, Dave?
Yes, actually, when we want to speak, there is a little hands up thing on the...
Yes, I can see that. Okay.
I believe works quite effectively, so...
Okay, well, certainly members of the board can do that. Peminda, I can see all, thank you for sharing the screen, I can see all of you now. But yes, well, Dave, I tell you what, let's just try that. You click the hands up thing, let's do that.
Can you see it?
Um, my screen is quite small at the moment. Yes, there's something flashed up, but I mean, you can always do the wave as well, okay, you know?
Yes, that's all I did.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, I've got a...
Belt and braces. Okay, so the only apology, well, moving to the agenda, everybody, and welcome, everybody, especially, oh, if you could, in terms of who we have new, we have Deborah, I think, who is going to be helping us in future, not just this morning. So Deborah, could you just put your camera on? She's from Democratic Services and let everybody see you and just give us a quick wave. There's Deborah.
Hi, everyone.
Good morning, welcome. Okay, thank you. You can go now and come back later.
Mr. Chairman, could I just, it's Peminda, sorry.
Yes, Peminda.
For some reason, I haven't got the hand on my bar today. I'll have a look later, but a couple of quick things, please. One is that I might need to go in and out of the meeting if the carers turn up for my wife. So if I disappear a few minutes, please, I'm gone away. The second one, you sent, yeah, you sent two, we had two sets of papers come through the post. I've read the first one, but is there any difference on the second one? Because I haven't gone through that, he came yesterday.
No, no, they're exactly the same.
Okay.
Except on the first set of pages, papers, you might have had the first 35 pages, because I've had two sets as well. And the first set, I did have the first 35 or so pages repeated. So I don't know whether that was the same for everybody, but no, there's no difference between the two sets of papers.
Just that the first one was in colour, so...
Yeah, first set were in colour and they had a sort of a green string through them. That's mine, but there is a little bit of duplication there. But no, the second set are exactly the same, so no duplication there. I don't know, nothing, not that I've been able to detect, anyway. Helen will shout, or perhaps if Helen or whoever could come in and tell me if I'm wrong about that.
No, there's no difference at all.
Okay.
The first set got sent out and Royal Mail was a little slow because I had some members tell me that they hadn't received papers.
So you have belt and braces.
Second set sent out, just in case, and then they've all arrived at the same time.
Okay, okay, right. Thank you very much, Helen. Okay, so that being the case, and Deborah has introduced herself, we have another new member, Victoria, who's a new member of the officers' side. I think some of us may have seen Victoria at the training session, but so welcome, Victoria, to your first board meeting.
Thank you.
You and I have spoken a few times, but I know you saw some of the board members at the training session a week or so ago, but welcome and we look forward to hearing from you later.
Pleasure.
Okay, without further ado, then let's press on. We've had the apologies from Keith, disclosures of interest, mine will be the same as usual. Alan usually discloses, I presume the same as usual, Alan? You can switch your mic on, Alan, we're happy for you to speak anytime. In fact, it might be a good idea if members of the board keep their mics on as well, probably make it easier. Keep your mics and your pictures on and then you can speak anytime.
Chair Liz Firmstone's got her hand up to speak.
Who has, sorry?
Liz Firmstone's got her hand up to speak, Chair.
Liz, okay.
Sorry to interrupt, Chair. Could I just introduce Vicky Jenks as well? Vicky's our new Pensions Administration Manager and she's joined us two weeks ago. She's giving you a wave now.
Oh, Vicky, welcome.
Vicky will be taking over from Andrew Marston when Andrew's interim contract comes to an end in the middle of August.
Okay, oh, well, welcome, Vicky, okay. Perhaps you and I will have a chat a bit later on, you know, we can chat about our respective backgrounds and so on, but let's not delay things to do that now. But you're very welcome anyway. Thank you, thank you, Liz. Okay, so we now go on, we've had the disclosures of interest, forward plan, who is going to take us through that?
Morning, Chair, that's me. Hi all, so the forward plan sets out what we're hoping to achieve over the forthcoming year. There is one suggested amendment that I would like us to consider, and that is that the Investment Subcommittee will be held on the 14th of September this year. Therefore, to avoid information from being too dated, I propose we move the local Pension Board forward from the 26th of November to the week commencing 19th to 16th of October. Does that sound reasonable?
So what dates again?
Currently, it's the 26th of November, and I suggest moving it to the 19th to 26th of October, given that the Investment Subcommittee will be on the 14th of September. I believe Dave wanted to speak?
Yeah, I'd have to give my apologies, I'm away from the 14th and the 21st of October, so, you know, I'd have to give my apologies if we met.
Okay, well, good for you, good for you for being away, Dave.
Yes, absolutely.
We pulled it after 21st of October.
We all need to have another life. I actually have on my phone diary here, I have Warwickshire Board on the 20th of October, so I don't know where I got that from.
I have too.
I'd still have to give you apologies for that one, I'm afraid.
Yes, of course. Right, well, it sounds as though, as Alan and I have the 20th on and neither of us have objected so far, what about Mike and Peminda? Do you have any problems with that date, 20th of October?
I don't believe I do, I'm not planning on being away anyway, so...
Okay.
In the work diary.
Well, Victoria, shall we, would the 20th of October fit your requirements?
I believe it would, yes.
Okay, well, look, let's say, we won't decide it definitely now, but we will firmly pencil in the 20th, and within the next week, you will either confirm that the date has been agreed as the 20th, or you will suggest a series of alternative dates to us and we'll fix another date. But within the next week or so, you know, we will hear from you that it is to be the 20th, or if you want to come forward with a date, you'll put those to us. Is that okay?
Agreed, yes, thank you.
Right, back to you, Victoria, sorry to interrupt, but dates are important, obviously.
Definitely, yes. On which point, we're now looking to bring the local Pension Board in line with the Pension Investment Subcommittee and Staff and Pension Committee, having four meetings a year. This means that hopefully the local Pension Board will be able to stay on top of our governance and ensure that we are following proper diligence. There's a policy schedule that we are looking to present, and that will cover all policies that concern Warwickshire Pension Fund. We intend to take these policy for review within each year to the relevant committee. That may not always be the local Pension Board. However, we will let the local Pension Board know that there has been a full cycle of policy reviews each year. Does that sound reasonable to you?
Any comments from board members? Everybody happy?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, carry on.
In that case, that is the forward plan covered. Does anyone have any further questions?
Well, I've got some questions. Can we go back to dates? Because on page one of three, or page five of the bundle, I mean, there's a title there, I think, we're talking about in the end two columns against local Pension Board, that should be January 2021, I think.
It should be, yes.
And April 2021. But you're talking there about January 20, and I think I may have had a date already from that, let me just check that. And Alan may have as well, I don't know, but I've got a date of Warwickshire Board, 26th of January. Alan, does anybody else have that? I don't think I dreamt it, somebody must have...
Yep, I've got that.
No, 26th of January, would that fit in with your dates for other meetings, Victoria?
That sounds very reasonable, following a six-week period after the Investment Subcommittee.
Okay, well, exactly, I'm not going to repeat all my words again, but it's the same as we said for the previous date. Within the next week, Victoria will confirm this date, or come up with other dates if need be. If anybody has a problem with that date, the 26th, then please let us all know by an email, or let Victoria know and she'll let us all know. Victoria, I think your email may have been copied on emails to board members, but can you just do an email after this meeting to all board members so we all have your email address to hand?
Yes, noted.
Thank you. And then similarly, I think, propose April, it said currently 4th of March, there, yes, I did have 4th of March on that.
I've got 13th of April.
I believe the 13th, sorry, Alan?
Yes, I've got the 13th of April.
Yeah.
13th of April makes a lot more sense, and again, follows that six weeks following the ISC.
Yeah, because somebody asked you to do something in March yesterday, and I said I can't do it on the 4th of March because I've got another commitment, but obviously, so we can delete the 4th of March now, if any of us had that on our diary, because we had that at one stage, and we know on the 13th of April. Okay, board members, you have the forward plan in front of you, Victoria has spoken to it, does anybody have any comments or questions?
I'm happy.
Sounds as though there aren't any. Okay, so we'll move on, and the next item then is Business Plan Monitoring. That's going to be Chris. Good morning, Chris.
Good morning.
Over to you.
So this is the first of the quarterly Business Plan Monitoring reports. We set an annual business plan and that went to the committees and the local pension board in March. And at that committee, the local pension board, sorry, the board meeting, board members requested, could we bring a quarterly monitoring report, looking at the business plan actions and going through where we're at with them? So this is the first time we've done anything like this, and the aim is to go through that business plan. I've set up a simple RAG rating, which I've explained in the report, to try and help with where we're focusing and where things are on track and don't require any additional attention. You can see in the report, the majority of actions are on track, and there are no actions that have got a status whereby there's a significant risk to the fund or we need any major governance inputs to put things back on track at the moment. This, as well as reporting this to this board, we are going to be using this form of monitoring actively amongst officers. We have a Pension Fund Managers' Coordination Group we set up to keep all of the senior management of the Pension Fund coordinated, and this action plan is one of the specific agenda items that we'll be paying attention to. That's all I had to say by way of introduction, happy to take any comments or questions.
Okay, does any member of the board have any comments or questions? And before opening that to you all, apologies to Mike, I did, before you were in the room, say you were coming in, Mike, I've recognised your background from our previous discussions, so I knew you were with us. But Mike is our new board member, representing employers, replacing David Buckland. Mike and I have spoken one to one and we also on a training session, so we're getting to know each other, so welcome, Mike, and apologies for not doing this earlier.
No, no, thank you, anyway, apologies, I was out of the room initially when I joined, anyway, so thank you.
Oh, you were back in your seat by 11, Mike, so you were okay, you were okay.
Sometimes takes a few minutes to log on, so I sort of took it on log on.
Right, okay, does anybody have any comments or questions on what Chris has been saying? Please wave your hands or, you know, jump up and down, whatever you want to do, or use the technology, no? Chris, I mean, as you say, it's virtually all green, thankfully, I don't see any reds, if there are any there, I've missed them. We have a couple of ambers, any of those, which of those, any of those of, you know, more concern than others, or that, you know, are some of the ambers worryingly near red or rather than just off green, any comments on that?
Just to run through, so Governance Action Plan, we'll talk about later, that's amber because there's a lot to do, that's certainly not red, but it's not green either. I think employer contributions, you can see under the actuary activities, that was quite a worry at the beginning of the lockdown, so that's been flagged as amber. The reality is at the moment that our experience of employer contributions isn't out of the ordinary, we have not got an extraordinary backup of late contributions at this point in time. We have had, however, one or two employers start to remark on Covid being a pressure, but where that has happened, Covid's been brought in as another reason for difficulty within employer that we've already got difficulties we're trying to resolve. I don't think there's anything else particularly I would pick out, I mean, there are things that we need to make sure that we do, for example, looking at employer covenants and being targeted in seeking to understand and help employers that likely to have difficulties, but that's on the radar, and so the plan is we should be able to look at that during the remainder of the year. So there's nothing I would pick out right now as being a risk of red, as long as we keep on track and keep focused on the ambers.
Thank you, Chris. Any comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman, a quick one, it's Peminda. The border to coast fund arrangements, I mean, they were quite ambitious in how they were going to be delivering and doing things with the Covid-19 and all that, is there some risk that some of those things won't be as, coming forward as quickly as we thought they might?
There is a risk of that. As far as Borders to Coast is concerned, they've been able to continue their functions and operations very well during the Covid period. There are some types of fund launches where you might want to launch a new fund, where doing it in these circumstances might not be the most sensible thing to do. At the moment, the next fund launch that we're planning on joining is the Multi-Asset Credit Fund, which is likely to go live in, at the beginning of calendar year 2021. So a key thing is that by that point, the markets would have settled down a bit. Some of the fund launches for Borders to Coast have been impacted by volatility driven by Brexit, but Brexit's not so high on the radar at the moment since Covid hasn't arrived. But functionally speaking, Borders to Coast have been operating very well, we've been rising with them, we've been transferring money where it's been due, and everything's been working very sonically.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris, you happy with that, Peminda?
Yes, Chair, I just wanted to make sure it was okay in the background, so...
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Can I, I'm just interested really in point number 31 about the contracts to be reviewed, just interested in what do you include in those contract for services?
Yes, so, for example, we have a contract with Hyman's as our actuary, we also have a contract with Hyman's as our main financial advisor, we have contracts with independent financial advisors on the Investment Subcommittee, we have a contract with a comfortable Hayward for the old air system, which the administration team use, and so on and so on, so we've got a mixed economy of functions which we manage and provide internally, and functions which we buy in from the outside. And the purpose of this action is to make sure that all of those contracts are mindfully reviewed, refreshed, tendered at the appropriate time, according to the contract standing orders of the administrating authority. And that just makes sure that we're keeping all of our services sharp and make sure that they're providing the right kind of services at good value for money. And the aim is to have a simple list, here's all our contracts, here is when the next opportunity to step off them is, for example, if you have a contract that's, say, three years plus two, and here is the data which we've got to tender them, unless we're going to get an exemption for some specific reason.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Any other questions or comments?
Just, sorry, if I can just come back again, just on number 36 about the policy reviews, I'm hoping that we will get to see a list of all these policies and the dates they're being reviewed, because I'm, my book is quite a mash of different policies there.
Yes, yeah, absolutely. And although, as Victoria said earlier on, different policies will go to different committees depending on what they are, we can definitely share what that list is, and it's the same philosophy as with the list of contracts, we just want a simple list of all the policies of the fund, when they need to be next reviewed, and then we can use that to make sure we plan and review them. And this is a product of the governance review last year, where we had a number of policies that we flushed out as needs to be reviewed that hadn't been looked at for some time.
Okay.
Okay, but by the way, we did agree last year that as we go through meetings, if we have any action points, we would note them, and then they would be brought back to the next meeting. So if I, from the chair, miss out, if there's something where you think we need an action point, then please, with any board member, you know, just shout, or equally, if any of the officers feel there's something from their side, they would like to have a log as an action point, then please, you know, shout and let us know that we should be doing that. Okay, thank you, Chris. Anything further to say on that report?
No, that's everything from me.
Okay, so that was the Business Plan Monitoring. We're now going to do Risk Monitoring, I think. Is that you again, Chris?
Yes, that's me. So Risk Monitoring, we brought the annual kind of update of the risk register to the March Local Pension Board, and also went to the committees, and this is the first year where we're bringing regular quarterly monitoring of risks every quarter, and this is another of the actions products of the governance review last year. The next agenda item we'll see is Covid, and there's a Covid risk register. The approach that we've taken, I'll just explain before going into any more detail, is to keep the risk register that we set at the beginning of the year as it was, and focus on looking at the direction of travel of the risks in that register, simply because that was a faster and simpler way of doing it, bearing in mind that the circumstances and the lockdown. So you'll see in the Risk Monitoring Report, a kind of assessment of direction of travel. We set up a separate risk register for Covid, so that we could look at it clearly and independent of all the other things going on in the fund. So at this moment, we have two risk registers, the general one and the Covid one. And that situation is because we wanted to be able to see Covid clearly in its own right. At some point later in the year, it may be sensible to simplify and consolidate everything back to one risk register on one plan, because at the moment, we've got the benefit of the clarity of an independent Covid plan, but we've got the confusion of two risk registers. So I've just thought I'd explain the reason why it is as it is at this moment. This Risk Monitoring Report has also been taken to the Investment Subcommittee and Staff and Pensions Committee, they've both got the same kind of risk summary, but then the detail of those reports and the conversations focus on investments and administration, respectively. There's a number of actions you'll see in the risk register that will cross over with actions... There's a number of actions you'll see in the risk register that will cross over with actions in other plans, such as the governance review, the business plan. Something that we will need to consider is trying to keep our action plans simple and not have too many different action plans flying around. So that's a challenge for fund offices to consider. In terms of the actions, in terms of the risks that have changed the most, we were most worried about investments, the impact on investments, short term and long term of Covid, and also employer contributions. But that's all I had to say by way of introduction about the risk register and the monitoring. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Chris. Over to questions or comments.
Could I come in with a question?
Dave, yes, please.
I mean, I know we're coming on to Covid shortly, the next item on the agenda. But I've just got a feeling we're a bit trapped over focused on Covid here. I mean, obviously, I'm not suggesting that Covid isn't enough. It's, it's obviously pretty, pretty awesome in that sense. But it seems to me that we've got, you know, a gathering trade war between China and the United States, which we are increasingly being drawn into as the UK. I don't think that is going to be insignificant. And Brexit does appear to be going fairly determinedly towards a no deal. Maybe there's going to be a rabbit pulled out of the hat at the end. But I don't feel that Covid is the only significant external risk on top of the usual ones. I think we possibly need to look a bit wider, is my suggestion.
Yes, yes, thanks for that comment. And in the, in the review of asset performance last year, the issue of China and the US, you know, the global economic position is a big issue. It's a much bigger issue, you know, than Brexit, which is just, you know, more of a local, more of a local thing. In terms of what's the bigger issues and the things we need to look out for, I agree, we need to be looking out for those things as well. If you go back to 2008 and look at the valuation of the pension fund when there was that previous crisis, there was a big negative impact on the fund. And then there was a big bounce back the next year. And if you go forward a few years and smoothed out those few years, you'd struggle to notice that anything happened. We don't know what's going to happen with Covid and whether it will, whether it will high now or whether we're going to be starting growth again from a permanently lower base. And there is some fundamental long-term issue, don't know. But you're right, those other things that have been going on haven't suddenly stopped.
I mean, in terms of, obviously, if there is a big downturn, obviously that has its impact. But it can also have its benefits as well, in the sense that you can accrue in those periods. But, but I mean, things are not looking good and stable at the moment. And that, I think, needs possibly a little bit more reflection there.
Yeah, I agree, there's certainly lots of uncertainties. Parminda, you were waving, I think.
All right, thank you, Chair. Just really a quick question on the, on the direction of travel. Can I just get just off, what does the higher risk and the significantly higher risk mean? I mean, you know, it's the amber and the red. Just to get an understanding of what is the significance of those two different ones?
So this was a kind of, you could say, subjective office judgment. And it was just trying to find a simple way of highlighting what we thought were the most significant changes in risk compared, comparing now to the start of the year. So there's, there's no deep sophistication or theory underneath them. It's just a high level office judgment.
Thank you, thank you.
Alan?
I'd like to pick up on Dave's point about other risks. I noted that the cybersecurity had got put back. And talking about China, we've heard about threats from state-sponsored hacking in terms of the consequences of removing Huawei from our IT infrastructure. And we've also heard rumours about Russia trying to steal secrets about vaccines. And I think with the Covid crisis and stuff being done more online as we're doing it today, that presumably also increases risks. And I think cybersecurity is something that we really need to be on top of.
Yes, we, we did develop the cybersecurity policy and it was lined up to go to the staff and pensions committee. It was taken off the agenda simply as one of a few items that came off to make space on that committee because of the lockdown and they weren't sure if they could handle the whole agenda. So we have got that draft policy there and we're continuing to develop it. That will come back to staff and pensions committee in the next cycle. But I agree with all your comments about cyber risk being a big issue and then increasingly a big issue.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree with all those comments. Anybody else? Any other comments or questions? One question, or I suppose I have, I've been looking at the investment side. On the administration side, which I think the board needs to concentrate. I mean, investments are always more exciting and more interesting. But on the administration side, I get the impression you're all sort of, well, most people are working from home now. But in the event, and hopefully this won't happen, but in the event that there was another general lockdown or, and of course, again, hopefully it won't happen, but there's a greater likelihood there will be local lockdowns. And if there was a local lockdown in an area that embraced Warwickshire for any reason, would that bring back or cause any additional difficulties to deal, that you have to deal with in terms of administration over and above what you're dealing with now?
I'll answer that first of all, but if any colleagues want to follow up, please, please feel free.
The question I'm asking really is, you know, we've gone from lockdown and if it came back in whatever form, would that create problems that you haven't thought of? Or are you prepared to meet those problems, basically?
There's always a potential for things that you haven't thought of. All I would say first of all is that when the first lockdown happened, in the week before it started, the county council did a kind of test run of everybody go home and see how it works. Because we didn't know if lockdown was going to happen. So we all went and did that and pretty much didn't come back. The majority of the functions of the pension fund, certainly the critical functions, we've kept going. And we haven't had any major issues. There's been lots of challenges to overcome, but there's no function of pension fund that's critically fallen over since the lockdown. If there were targeted small lockdowns, it's always possible there's something about those that we haven't thought of that we'd struggle with. So I couldn't be sure if we will certainly cover everything. But so far with the, with the national lockdown, we've, we've kept the critical things going.
Okay, does any other officer want to say anything on that or are you happy with that answer?
Andrew Felton's raised his hand, Chair.
Andrew, yes, thank you.
Hi, Chair. Just to say that there's a lot of work going on within the county in terms of trying to make various buildings Covid secure. So if there's ever a need to access buildings for whatever reason, we've got special arrangements to allow that on an ad hoc basis. And I'm fairly confident that the homeworking arrangements have worked really well. And like Chris said, there were some challenges in terms of getting set up, but we've been operating in that way for the last four months. So, and, and there's no sense at the moment that staff have been allowed to return to buildings while they're still being adapted. So we're going to, we're going to be working in this way probably for another four to six months potentially and only coming back in on an exception basis. So another lockdown, we'll probably still be working from home at that point in time anyway, if it does occur.
Okay, thank you very much, Andrew. Thank you. Okay, any other questions or comments from board members? Okay, well, thank you, Chris. We're now moving on. And the next item is the Covid nineteen report. Is that you again, Chris?
Yes, that's me. Don't worry, the next report won't be me. So this is a specific report looking at Covid. And we set up a bespoke risk register just to focus on Covid uncluttered by everything else. The key issues you've seen here is losses in investments, short term and long term being a worry, and also cash flow being a key issue, a very significant risk. The pension fund isn't short of investments, we've got over two billion. The key issue here is, if we had any problems with cash flow, would we have to do anything very inefficient with our own investments in order to, you know, pay our benefits and so on? For example, liquidate lots of equity holdings just after they went down significantly in value. So that's the kind of thing we were focusing on. The operational activities within the pension fund have continued well since the lockdown. We've been able to pay benefits to members. We've been able to meet capital, draw down requests where fund managers, where we've agreed to commit to them, say to us, we're ready for your money, give us, you know, however much money. All of that has been functioning okay. Asset values have fluctuated a lot. They went down very significantly when the lockdown had started and around the end of the financial year. But there's been quite a significant rally, not a 100% rally, but they've bounced back quite a bit since then. And time will tell, you know, what else happens from this point on. Employer contributions were a concern, but the reality is that they've remained fairly normal. We've got some contributions that are, you know, past the deadlines, but no more than a business as usual level of activity. We've got a number of actions that have been aligned. So with the risks, if you look in appendix one, further risk actions, what this appendix shows you is actions that were already in place that you could associate with the risks coming from Covid. But we've made a point of documenting anything further that we need to do that wasn't already happening. So for example, ensuring that the cash flow management was prioritised. We already had a strategic review of cash flow management that was already going to the March Investment Subcommittee. But we've done a lot of other work around cash to make sure that that's fine. So for example, we're holding slightly higher cash balances than we normally would. So that's slightly less efficient, but it's slightly more robust. And we've also got a kind of a trickle-down strategy where we can move money slowly from the more volatile assets through the steadier assets through to cash in a way that is more planned and usually less, less at risk of, a timing risk where you've got to pull money out of some volatile with, with not a lot of control over the timing. That's probably as much as I had to say by way of introduction. I'm happy to take any questions or comments.
Thank you, Chris. Over to the board. Nobody at all? Okay. All I would say, and we'll touch on this briefly a bit later on, but in the report that I did, I actually highlighted, which we have later on the agenda. I, I had in my notes of the meeting of the, when was it? It was the twenty-sixth of February, the following paragraph. Although this was a month before the lockdown, in response to a four-sided question from a board member, I think it was David Buckland actually, who asked the question, that what was likely to be the effect? And it was Chris said, there was likely to be a short-term and long-term impact. Well, he was certainly right there. Well-known, Chris, that was a very, very succinct but correct answer. But as I ended up saying, little did the board realise the extent to which this would turn out to be the case, you know. I don't think, I mean, I don't think any of us foresaw what was, what has happened was going to happen. In fact, I, having been at the board meeting at Warwick, I then went on to the local government conference in Chester. And I was there from the Wednesday evening until the Friday. And that was the last event that I attended. I was due to be in London the following week, but long, this was the ninth of March. But I decided then that I was going to impose my own lockdown. But even then, I mean, you know, what's happened, it's been absolutely crushing, I think, on human activity. And thank goodness, we seem to be, two things I'd say. One, we seem to be getting away out of it. And I mean, there's been some encouraging news this morning on the radio. And I heard late news last night about the, you know, the, the actual vaccines and so on. The other thing I'd like to say, and from other contacts I've had virtually, I'm not surprised at all because of the history. But I have been, you know, really, really very impressed by the response from local government generally. The way things keep, you know, our bins are still collected. We've even had our garden bin collected every fortnight without any stoppage and so on. And as we have a reasonable-sized garden, that's been quite handy, because that's been my salvation, the garden really. But I think local government, you know, generally has responded remarkably well, as it usually it does. I speak as a long-time local government man, of course, so I'm biased. But also again, I think, you know, what I've seen from Warwickshire, the way that, and the way, you know, these things have been set up has been very, very commendable and impressive. And I mean, just on behalf of myself, I'd like to thank you. And I've had support from Chris and Victorian colleagues over the past weeks. We had a very good training session a week or so ago. So I think despite all the challenges, and it does, I'm rather old fashioned. It makes these risk registers seem almost a bit odd, doesn't it? Because this was a massive risk and nobody saw it coming. So I'm not decrying the value of risk registers, don't misunderstand me. But you, you have to be sometimes nimble-footed. But I've said in my report, there's been unprecedented use of the word unprecedented. But this is unprecedented and the reaction, I think, has been highly, highly commendable. So well done to the elected members and to the officers of Warwickshire for everything you've done. I mean, thank you. Anybody else got any other comments after that little monologue? Okay, we now have pension administration and performance data. Sounds like somebody else other than you, Chris, or is that you again?
That's Andrew, I'll hand over.
I thought it would be. Hello, Andrew.
Hello, Chair. Good morning, everybody.
You, over to you.
Thank you. So just to, I'll take you through the pension board admin activity and performance. I think as a, as an overriding statement, I just wanted to make the board aware, really how, I'm really very proud of how the team have been able to respond in, in the circumstances of Covid. The whole moving from being in the office to being at home and overcoming any little wrinkles that they had with the IT, but that's all working well. And, and they adapted and, and got down to providing service to members very quickly and very well. I think they did a tremendous job in the circumstances. I'll just draw out some highlights from, from the report, if I may. First one, I'll go to item three with the governance action plan, just to highlight there that we are continuing to progress in a timely fashion with progressing and completing the actions from, from the governance plan. And as well, although I think as well, I'd like to invite Liz to come in for three point two with the pensions costing exercise. And because we both recognise that you would probably want a verbal update this morning on just on, on where we are with that one. And Liz has been handling that one closely.
Thank you, Andrew. Apologies for my phone there, didn't turn off as quickly as I thought it was going to. Liz, over to you.
Yes, thank you, Chair. We, we are planning to bring back a report on pensions administration costs. Obviously, this was something that the board had raised following the 2018/19 SIPR benchmarking exercise. We've been undertaking a real root and branch review of the pensions costs and liaising quite closely with the SIPR Benchmarking Club to make sure that we are producing that information on a like-for-like basis with the other members. There was a review carried out by the SIPR Benchmarking Club led by Cheshire last year, which we've been talking to them about very closely. And it will result in some changes in the 1920 figures. I think it will reflect a, quite a reduction in, in the costs compared to 2018/19. And the deadline for that, that exercise is, is over the summer, so. And the deadline for that exercise is over the summer. So we'll be able to bring something back to the next meeting on that. What's quite interesting is that the feedback that we've had from the Benchmarking Group overall is that a lot of the members in the group were struggling to follow the guidance. The guidance was not as clear as it might have been in terms of how those returns should be completed. And I think it's not so much a case of Warwickshire having been out of step with the rest of the group. I think there were issues with the comparability of data across the group from what we've been able to find out. So I'm hopeful that the refreshed guidance that has been produced by the Benchmarking Group will mean that when the 1920 stats come out, there'll be much greater comparability and a much higher level of assurance on on those figures. But I do expect them to indicate that the cost of the Warwickshire pensions administration function is showing us as really quite efficient compared to its comparator group.
Thank you, Liz. One question, you may, it's maybe slightly unfair, but do you have any idea how many funds are in the Benchmarking Group?
Oh, I don't off the top of my head. It's not a
Is this regional or is it a national? Is it regionally or nationally these days?
It's national. It's national, but it's, I would say, I'm going from memory here, but I think it's less than 50% of the LGPS funds.
Yeah, and there are 88, I think.
It's not too representative, but it's not massive.
Okay. Well, perhaps as an action point, which I mentioned earlier, I mean, just to reinforce what you just said, if you could report back to the next board on what the latest findings are, and perhaps you could, one of the things you could do is give us an answer on that. Because obviously, the significance of the Benchmarking Club, I mean, if it was just to exaggerate and make my point, if it was just you and Chester and Cheshire, it wouldn't mean very much, would it? You know. And we know it's more than that, but if we could have an indication of how many there are, then that would be helpful, I think.
Yes, of course.
Okay, board members, comments, questions please? On that, before I go back to Andrew. No? Okay, well, that's helpful and well done. And thank you. That's very, very interesting. Thank you, Liz. Back to you, Andrew.
Sorry Chair, can I just
With you, Liz.
I think Alan was trying to speak.
Oh, sorry, Alan.
Alan, you were muted.
Yeah. Thank you very much, Liz. That sounds promising.
Thank you.
Okay, so Liz, are you finished now?
I am, thank you Chair.
Thank you, Liz. Okay, Andrew, back to you. Anything else?
Thank you Chair. Yeah, so with 4.2, just wanted to give you an update there that we've got some final fieldwork queries that were just being worked through with the internal audit team. But they are unlikely to materially change the draft findings and responses. And as an administration
Isn't it? Page 33, yes. Yeah.
Yeah, so item 4.2. But I just wanted to update the board to let them know that as an administration service, our actions in response to the findings is actually work in progress. We're getting on with them in lieu of, you know, the necessary steps to complete the report anyway. So those are all in hand and being progressed. So I think we're in a positive and managed position there. Moving on to the payroll update, again, I just wanted to report that I'm pleased with the relationship which the administration service has with the council payroll team. We now have an established network and a good, strong working relationship there for both day to day queries but also on projects. So that is in a well functioning position as well. Moving on to item six, I just wanted to highlight that the team has done a tremendous job and we got ourselves down to by 50% to 2,500 items of work in progress as we approach the end of the end of year. As expected, we have taken an upward turn as a result of the end of year data returns. They always generate queries, as do the issuing of the deferred benefit statements. But the indicators now on the daily figures that we monitor are showing that we're probably going to get over that hump in the next couple of months or so as well. So we can we can start to drag those numbers down again.
Any questions or comments from board members at that point?
Just a quick question on the on the changing in the way we work. Is that going to have an effect, a positive or a negative one, or how are you monitoring that most people working from home?
Yeah, so there's no doubt that it has had a change. And what we're finding is that we are spending more time on a day to day basis checking in with the team. Because we're placing a lot more time and effort into understanding how they are with their wellbeing. Because understandably, everybody has different circumstances at home. But as well now, I think people are prepared for an extended period of working from home now, as Andy alluded to earlier. But we have also, because we monitor it so closely, I mean, I can share, we have had one member of the staff where homeworking was affecting their wellbeing, affecting their performance. But working with the county council team, we were able to go through a supportive process where that individual now is able to work from an office environment in a COVID secure way. So so we have been able to take those steps to make sure that we're taking care of our people.
Well done. Good, good. Thank you, Pampinda. Any other comments or questions? Okay, Andrew?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, I just wanted to say about pensions increases. Again, so we've got through that very well this year. An excellent example of how the administration service has worked with the pensions payroll team. So that was highly effective. And I wanted to give you an update on where we are with the end of year returns. Is that all of our data from our employers has been uploaded now. We have been working through the queries, the queries that are a result of that have been at I would say they've probably been at normal levels, which in this circumstances is better than expected levels because we were we were prepared for some impact as a result of the changes because of the results of COVID-19. But actually, our employers have been able to respond well and it's kept us on track with the work that we've done over end of year. And that has lined us up, lined us up for a good annual benefit statements exercise. So I'll touch on annual benefit statements just to give you an update as to where we are there. So the timeline is in the appendix within the paper, but also just to let you know that we are on track with our benefit statement deadline. So a small adjustment to that timeline is that we are extracting the data for our print printing supplier at the end of this week. It's a, it's an intense time, as you're probably aware, that we need to make sure that everything is ready, but we consider ourselves in a managed position and that we will continue to plan and issue the vast majority of benefit statements by the regulatory deadline of 31st of August.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? No? Okay, Andrew?
In terms of recruitment, the team is at full complement now. All vacant positions are filled. And as you met Vicky, Vicky Jenks earlier, who is now indeed the permanent post as the administration manager. So Vicky's already making a difference to, in a contribution to the team. And we are managing a handover over the next few weeks. So that will go as smooth as it possibly can.
Good. Thank you.
Key performance indicators, they're happy, I didn't want to particularly highlight any, but I'm happy to take any queries or questions over the KPIs either for 1920.
Just one comment, not a question. I mean, the lowest, well, we've got 32% at the top, but then we've got 69%. But I see in recent months, again, there's a significant improvement to 89% in terms of transfers paid within 10 days. So direction of travel is certainly right there.
Yes, and I think that sort of that sort of indicator also flows through into the new KPIs as well, Chair. In that what you're seeing is a, there is a bit of a dampening effect as we have made significant progress with some of the outstanding work that existed.
Yep. Okay, if any member, you know, shout or wave if you want to do anything, otherwise, carry on, Andrew, please.
Thank you. So the new KPIs, as described in Appendix two, are in place and we've got the procedures and the reporting mechanisms in place now that we can report against those KPIs. I think of significance is that we have now moved to we could consider an industry standard set of KPIs. So we can, if we choose to, we could start to compare how we are performing with what other funds might be doing.
Forgive me for nitpicking, but unless, I think it's fact that there's been a shuffle, it's Appendix three on my pages, I think. Appendix two is the end of year annual benefit statement timeline, so
Thank you Chair.
Appendix three, I think. Thank you. Okay, sorry, carry on.
That's okay. So the team has now moved, we've changed our processes and reporting so that they are now working to and reporting against those new KPIs. With regard to annual benefit statements, on the reported breach from 2019, I'm happy to update the board that. I'll shortly be writing to TPR on the 2019-20 position with a proposal that we close down the breach reporting in respect of the active members. And we are also then progressing the appointment of our supplier for the tracing exercise for deferred members with whom we have, we don't have up to date addresses.
Has there been any contact with the regulator at all? Have they been in touch or suggest your reporting and that's the last you hear of it?
No, the interaction, the engagement with, so I've got a named contact at the regulator for this particular topic. And we've been staying in touch every two or three weeks as I've provided progress updates.
Okay, thank you.
And the tone and content of those communications are positive and supportive.
Thank you. Okay.
And in terms of highlights, then I would just move down to 16, and that is for the iConnect project. Just to update the board and members there to confirm that we have got the full approval. We do have the project set up in a robust and rigorous way now with a so that we've got the right governance in place. We have the resources lined up for each of the work streams. And we've also got our Phase One Employers and Payroll Services defined as to who we want to engage with. So we are progressing well with the rollout of that project as well.
Okay.
So those are my highlights. Yeah, but I'm happy to take any other questions on any part of the report.
Thank you. Board members, comments or questions? Quite a lot of stuff there, a lot of work going on, obviously.
Just thinking, yeah, just thinking in terms of the iConnect project, which bearing in mind trying to engage with all the employers, sounds quite a monumental project. What did the sort of main risks you sort of see of that project?
The risks are, and how we're mitigating against it really is that because we are asking the employers and particularly either their payroll teams or what might be an outsourced payroll arrangement, is that we need to engage with those with those teams as early as possible to give them the lead times for their planning because we are asking them to change how they will engage with us for these data submissions. So it will mean changes to data reports or methods of data exchange. So it's important that we engage early with them. Now, and there may be, we are prepared for that somebody out there may well be changing their payroll provider while we do this. You know, so that is something that we will, we will have to manage along the way.
Right, okay, thank you. Well, good luck with that.
Okay. Alan?
Can I ask about the KPIs? There was one point not so long ago where there was mention of KPIs that were hard to grab the data for and some manual work was having to be put in to actually record the numbers. To what extent will the new KPIs, will the data be caught automatically as opposed to having to trawl through things to actually establish the numbers?
Well, that's work that we've done as part of the implementation of these new KPIs is to make sure that we've got better mechanisms, better reporting tools in place so that we are not putting a lot of manual effort or manual intervention into that data. So that is something that is, it will be a much improved position compared to the procedures that are the steps that had to be go through for the previous sets of KPIs.
Good. Thank you. Anything else? Just one, I'm probably, something I've missed or I'm probably being thick, but just a, you know, very simple question. In section 14 breaches, we have a small table there. I can understand red, amber, green breach and total. What does no breach mean? Why do we have no breaches listed? I was just confused by that.
That's just a balancing position there, Chair. And actually, over a period of time, what I'd like to see is that is the biggest number that you're seeing.
Oh, right. So it is as simple as that. Okay. Right. Okay, sorry. Well, that's ended. Yeah. Okay, I was being thick. I apologize.
Just as we start to be able to trend this information for you, you know, as with the employers and we start to change behaviors and we'll need to keep a close eye on it as well as we roll out the iConnect platform is to, is to make sure that we are on top of the numbers in each of those columns. And we see a, over a period of time, we see the trends so that we go from breaching to non-breaching effectively.
So you're saying for 72 employers, you had no breach? Okay, obvious. Yeah, as I say, I was very thick, in fact, not just thick, very thick. Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, yes. Hello, it's Keith Francis. I'm actually alive.
Oh, Keith, welcome. Well, I didn't get your email until just the meeting was starting, so apologize for not replying, but I hope things are okay with you, good lady.
So do I. But I also apologize for a late start and I apologize in advance for what's going to be an early finish. But can I just go back to the iConnect project, please? I'm not, I'm not absolutely certain that I understand the process here. Are we asking the 72 or however many employers there are to feed in to iConnect themselves? Have they've got access to iConnect, have they?
Yes. So at the moment, Keith, all of the employers or their payroll providers are sending information to us either on a monthly or an annual basis. And they're doing that generally in a, it's with prescribed data in a prescribed format. But at the moment, that is a largely spreadsheet data exchange exercise. The iConnect project introduces a digital platform for that submission. And what it means as well is that they will be, where they are submitting data annually, we will be asking them to submit data monthly to us. them to submit data monthly to us. That will make sure that the data is more relevant, more up-to-date, means we can deal with any queries in a more timely manner, and should take and will take a lot of the pressure out of the year-end exercises and then the following annual benefit statement exercise.
Yeah, no, I fully, I can understand the benefits, the great benefits that you should get from it. Forgive my skepticism, but I think if you're going to ask 72 different entities, of which can't even be, I'm under huge stress, to actually change their process to by the end of this year, if that's correct, then I'm extraordinarily skeptical.
Just to clarify with the timeline, Keith, is that it is all employers, so, and that is the, in Ramfeger's 200, all employers, but our actual timeline for the rollout of the project goes in three phases through to April 2021.
Well, I think that's good news from my point of view. I'm still highly skeptical, but at least that's better than I feared. Okay, I will monitor this with great, great interest.
Well, let's have as an action point for the next meeting, a report back on how things have gone relative to Keith's question.
Liz wanted to come in, Keith.
Is that fair enough, Liz? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, just a little bit more on that, Keith. Although we've got 194 employers, actually, the number of payroll providers that they use is slightly less than that because some of them use the same payroll providers, so it's not quite that many. The other thing perhaps to mention is that some of those payroll providers will already be using iConnect with some of the other employers that they provide services to. So there's a number who are quite keen to implement this system. So I'm sure there will be some where this is perhaps not so welcome, but there are some who have been asking for iConnect for some time. Also, some of the smaller employers where they have very few members in the scheme, they have a slightly different approach. So it's online submission. So instead of completing spreadsheet, they complete an online form to submit. So it's effectively doing the same as they do now, and it's a much simpler process for some of those smaller employers.
I think if I might add, Liz, as well, with the, when you look at it through the lens of the size of the active membership, you know, we're working very closely with the Warwickshire County Council payroll team, who are extremely supportive of what we're trying to do. And actually, when they come on stream, then that will also represent the, you know, the largest proportion of the active membership.
Oh, yes. All right, I understand that point.
Okay, thank you. Any other points? Okay, well, you finished, Andrew, is that it? You're done?
I am, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Keith, by the way, can I say, I can see all the board members but not you, so whether you don't have your camera on or what, I don't know, but we can, I can see the other board members but not yourself. The officers are switching their cameras off, but we can hear you well, which is the important thing. So don't worry, buddy.
During this lockdown, it's probably quite good that you can't, actually.
What can I say? Yeah. Well, my video, I mean, everybody, I have a very good video of everybody else, but mine is incredibly jerky. So, you know, I don't know if it's the same if you're seeing. I've got two, a picture in the corner of myself and that one's working normally, but the one on the panel is very jerky, but there we are. Anyway, we didn't hear you, that's the important thing. Okay, let's move on. And I think the next thing is my report, isn't it, which is there for you to, really hopefully to approve or comment on. I've one amendment to make. I spotted a difference, a mistake I'd made. I think I credited Keith and Parminda with being present at the meeting on the 26th of February. So I was just, I don't think you were, Keith gave us notice in advance. This was a short dated meeting, so. So apologies for that, and that will be corrected. Otherwise, I've started at the outset, just to give a very quick summary before going up the background to what boards are, what they do. I've then said that the outset one had to acknowledge COVID, and we've already alluded, I think, to that enough, but obviously that was the elephant in the room. Then gone through the meetings, it was a fairly, shall I say, interesting year, and we had a number of issues which had to be dealt with. We had the consultant Ian Coleman came in who was helpful. Rob Powell came to meetings and obviously, that's not something he would normally do, he would normally not get involved. But, you know, I feel that we have seen a marked improvement in the resource allocation and the way that work has been done. And I tried to reflect those sentiments in my note and tried to capture the flavour. I'm a great believer in the more principle, so I don't believe in rewriting long reports that, you know, people probably wouldn't read anyway. Don't mean people will read this one necessarily, but hopefully for those that do, it gives a flavour of what happened during the year. Having said that, over to you for any comments or questions. Then we can move on, because the agenda, Alan, you're raising your hand, yeah?
I thought it was good, Keith.
Oh, thank, I wasn't.
You've had to write more than usual, and I found nothing wrong with it. Well done, thank you very much.
Oh, thank, well, because you will notice, Alan, that having, you two years ago told me that employee reps should be scheme member reps, and I missed that last year and got it wrong again, but I have got it right this year. So, you know, you can't teach old dog old dog new tricks.
Well done.
Okay, well, if everybody's happy with that, we'll move on to LGPS development update. I've been getting copies of these, I think I may have forwarded them, I can't remember, but I certainly asked the office to bring these forward, and it looks as though it's going to be Neil doing that. Neil, over to you.
Good afternoon, Chair, good afternoon, everybody. I wanted to take the opportunity to jump into the latest update on MacLeod here. A consultation was issued on Friday for MacLeod going forward, and I will send those consultation papers onto all members of the board following this meeting. Also, what I will do is if I receive any advisory updates from the LGA Scheme Advisory Board and the four actuarial firms or any other bodies commenting on MacLeod, I'll send those on to board members as well, straight away. And you'll all recall that MacLeod is going to be a huge task for all local authority pension funds and the other public service pension funds. And to give you an idea of the size of this exercise, we're looking at an impact on probably 25% of the membership of the fund, and that will include active members, deferred, early leavers and pensioners. And resourcing will need to be identified to address this either internally or by a third party. Briefly, the measures are the members in scope will be those members who are active on the 31st of March 2012 and have accrued benefits since 1st of April 2014. The underpin that applies will be extended from the 1st of April 2014 to 31st of March 2022. And if that member ceases, that underpin will then cease or dies in service. The final salary comparison will continue until that person leaves or until age 65. So you can see that possibly for the extent of active members, that is a long timeframe that the administrator will have to be prepared to look at the benefits that that person is entitled to. Now, generally, care benefits will provide a higher benefit to the member, but because of the difference
Sorry, care being career average?
It's the career average that came into force on the 1st of April 2014.
Career average as opposed to final salary?
That's right, yeah, yeah. But because of the difference in normal pension ages for the two schemes, which was 65 for the old schemes and could be 66 or 67 or spreading on for the new schemes, if a member left early, then the actuarial reduction factors could be different. So it could well be going forward that the final salary benefit could be higher than the care benefit. And that's the kind of exercise the administration will have to look at going forward over many years. Because it's retrospective, this will apply to everyone who has left or dependents of anybody who's died who didn't meet the underpin. So there's a big exercise there for the teams to look at. Employer costs, Hyman's have issued some guidance that they don't expect the MacLeod remedy to have a significant impact on liabilities, and they see them increasing by approximately 0.2%, which nationally would be about 5 billion across the England and Wales. But the impact may be different for particular employers, for example, those who have got a younger membership. You will also recall that we were looking at a cost control mechanism whereby there could have been improvements to the scheme, for example, the restructure of the contribution bands for lower paid members. That was paused because of MacLeod. That is now being reopened, but it could be that some of those improvements may not come through because of the impact of MacLeod. What we're doing is this afternoon, we're having a meeting to start planning for MacLeod, and what I'm proposing is that we update the board regularly on how this is progressing. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Neil, that was very comprehensive. Just one thing, something I saw last week that came out, but it said it only related to the fire and unfunded schemes, that something later was coming out with LGPS. Did I miss that or has something else come out since that I haven't seen?
That's, that's what I came in, it was in my inbox on Monday, so I assumed it came out on Friday or late Thursday evening, Keith. So that's what I sent on to you.
All right, okay, okay, apologies. Okay, board members, comments, questions, please? Mike, you're obviously new to the board, but you're, I mean, we've had a lot of conversations which you haven't been privy to about MacLeod, but presumably you have an understanding of what the fundamental issue is.
Yes, yes, obviously, I've seen it from the other side of being an employer, and yes, I know it's what a can of worms it is.
Yeah, okay, absolutely. Couldn't put it better myself. Okay, right, Andrew?
Oh, yeah, Andrew Falcon's raised his hand.
I just wanted to clarify, but I think, and I'll be careful with my limited knowledge at this stage, as I get this wrong, I think we've made some allowance for this within the triangle and forward thinking. I've just, yeah, Neil's nodding. So we have got some provision for this and some cover for this already. I suppose the work is just in establishing whether what now has been settled, how close that is to what we provisioned, basically.
Okay, thank you. So it's a big thing and it's, you know, going to be with us for a little while, I think. And as Mike says, it's a real can of worms, you know, there you go. Okay, if there are no other questions, and we can see you now, Keith, good to see you, and thank you for joining us in your, you know, personal circumstances. We very much, no, we do appreciate it. Thank you very much. It's very, very good of you. You always, you know, you've been a, you've been a member from day one, a very valued member and a very, very active member, so we miss you when you're not with us. Okay. Neil, anything else on LGPS development that you need to talk about?
No, thank you, Chair, unless anybody else has got any issues. I mean, the only other thing was the cost cap, where they're talking about limiting exit payments to 95,000.
Yeah.
That's been delayed again, and indications where we might get something before the end of the year.
Okay.
It seems to be dragging on a bit.
Okay, thank you. Right, so we're now on to the biggie, and I mean, we obviously, this is a massive document. We can't spend too much time on it, okay, we all do, you know, we could spend a lot of time on it, but if Keith can sort of, sorry, if Chris can give us the highlights or just say anything he wants to say about it, and then if anybody's, I mean, I will confess, I haven't read through every page. I've seen so many of these over the years, I tend to know the bits I want to look at. So I've looked at those, but other members may have their own voice, but Chris, if you can just give a few words of introduction and then we'll open it for discussion.
Yeah, sure. So this is the draft annual report, which includes the draft annual accounts for 2019-20. These will be finalized, signed off by council in October. The external audits being undertaken by Graham Thornton of our accounts, they're going to have a number of different challenges this year. The ones worth remarking on that external audit will be looking at particular are Level Three investments. This is things like infrastructure where there's no obvious inputs you could use the values on, so they're difficult to value. Also, in the valuation year, in the year that we've closed, that's another additional issue to have regard to. The external audit team will also be doing something they call a heart review every few years. Any particular pension fund, when they do their audit, they'll share that information with their central technical team that will give it a look over from a different perspective. So you will get the benefit of that additional scrutiny this year. Don't have any issues to report from external audit at the moment. We took a report to Audit Standards, in fact, yesterday, which explained the external audit plan, and it also included a review of the risks of the fund and how we have regard to those and the potential impact on the accounts. What the annual report includes is lots of standard documents and policies for the fund that have already been approved at other stages in the governance cycle. So for example, the investment strategy statement, funding strategy statement, you'll notice the responsible investment policy, which includes a brand-new climate change, climate risk strategy, which was a topic of discussion last year. So all of those things, they kind of land in the annual report, but they've already been through governance and approval at different points in time, so they don't require approval here. You'll also see reference to the activity of the fund and the growing number of, the growing membership, which we've also remarked on previously, you know, in the last year, looking at demands on the fund. A key issue for the local pension board is that we provide you with assurance that we've done the work on producing the accounts, they're going through the audit process, they contain all the correct documents. Happy to take any comments at a high level on this document, and I'm happy to take offline any smaller comments about the details or things to do with presentation.
Yes, thank you, Chris. Yes, high-level comments now, or policy comments, but anything in detail, yes, people can take up directly with Chris by email or whatever, and perhaps copy all board members and myself in if you feel, you know, the need to do so. Over to board members for comments or questions, please. Nobody? Well, I just got three sort of quick comments to make, really, not questions, but for confirmation, well, confirmation was set, two of them by Chris. First one, I noticed in Rob Powell's notes right at the beginning after Chairman Bob's even statement, Rob Powell made a very nice, short, succinct, you know, pleasing comment about the role of the board. So that was pleased, I was pleased to see that. And the membership of the board is listed, so that was just the first comment. It's in Rob Powell's fairly short statement, I think it's the second statement of the annual report. Chris, as I understand it, under the FFS, the funding strategy statement, for the major authorities, the period for getting back to 100% is 19 years, which of course, from my knowledge of other authorities, that is, you know, very good and reasonable. There were many which were 25 years, some, I think, one or two went up to 30 years at one stage. So, Chris, I can see Keith wincing there. So I can see Keith wincing there, but that's the fact. But so nineteen years, that's efficient. And again, subject to Covid and all of that, it was very much moving in the right direction. And comments on that, Chris?
Yeah, and there's a couple of elements to it, so nineteen years is the funding horizon. So we plan to get from where we are now to fully funded in nineteen years. The other thing that you have to factor in is the probability of reaching a hundred percent funding within nineteen years. So where Andy Felton mentioned a minute ago that the pension fund has provided for McLeod and the potential costs of that. How that works is you've got the funding horizon of nineteen years. And what we've done in the actuarial review is increase the required probability of reaching a hundred percent funding by nineteen years. We increased it from about five percent or thereabouts. So that's how that was built in to our assumptions. What that means then, if you translate that through to money is, it doesn't mean we've got a pot sitting somewhere as a provision. That higher probability pushes back into employer contributions and would be factored in that way. So the contributions we're receiving from here through this valuation period and the base from which we consider the next valuation will be moved around very slightly. But it will be very slight, the impact on the fund is very marginal liabilities wise.
Okay, thank you. And my third point was the funding level, the actuarial funding level at the actuarial date is listed as ninety two point three percent. Obviously, this was pre-Covid, there would have been changes. Do you have any figures on that at all?
Yes, so that was as at around December, ninety two percent or thereabouts. As at the outturn, I think it was eighty two point five percent. As at the back end of April, it was up to eighty five or thereabouts. I can check the exact figures, but basically the fund valuation went down very significantly into the lockdown. It's rebounded to some extent since, but it's definitely not back to where it was.
The one thing I would say however, is that there are four actuarial firms serving the LGPS in England and Wales and Scotland, I think. And Hyman's are accepted by all as being the most conservative. So if you'd had a different actuary, the likelihood, not the certainty, but the likelihood is that certainly with one or two of them, the valuation would be higher. Certainly Hyman's are, you know, known to be very conservative. So that I think is, well, I see that as comforting. Okay, well, it's a very long document as I've said and time is moving on. We pay for progress and I'm pleased, so thank you board, but any other questions or comments on the annual report? If not, I just thank you just for introduction, it's very, very informative and very good late night reading if you can't. I do document, okay. Let's move on. Next item are terms of reference. I think that probably, oh, that's Victoria, thank you, Victoria, over to you.
Yeah. Hi Board, the terms of reference has been updated and it's been updated in line with the Scheme Advisory Board's most recent guidelines. The officers went through the SAB guidelines and ensured that the terms of reference lined up with that. Therefore, you'll note that there have been considerable changes to the format and layout to ensure that it lines up quite neatly. In terms of the actual changes that have been fundamentally made. These are set out in the table that you can see with a note of the section number. This will go forward to the council in the forward plan and it will be put before the next local pension board for acceptance. It should be well received because it is now in line with the Scheme Advisory Board's checklist. Does anyone have any comments?
Well, I've just got one and I wasn't sure what to make it now or when looking at my report. But just to say that as members will be aware, we've had for too long a time really a vacancy on the board. And Chris, Jane Poirot and I did interview a candidate who was very enthusiastic and in many ways would have been good. But there were certain aspects in terms of understanding what the role involved, where there was some reservations. So we decided on that occasion not to appoint. But we have had another application from a candidate who on paper looks to be a very strong candidate indeed. It's, I can only find one negative thing to say about this person on paper. And we're going to do an online interview, I think, on Thursday of next week, I think it is. Or when, no, Thursday, I think of next week, I think that's right. But we're going to do an online interview then. A legal background and the only thing, the only reservation I have about the candidate is that it's a gender issue, it's another male. And it would have been nice to have had a female on the board. But I'm personally, and this is just a personal view, I've never been a person who goes in for, you know, these tokenism or having quotas or anything like that. And if it's a good candidate and happens, you know, it happens to be a male, well, we will obviously go ahead and appoint. But it remains to be seen how the interview goes. But on paper, certainly a good candidate, that's the only comment I have. And certainly, if that doesn't work out as I think it might, but time will tell. Then we really have to address this, carry on to address this in issue of the vacancy as a matter of urgency. That's all I have to say, thank you. Any other comments or questions?
I'd like to comment, I'd like to comment.
Yes, of course.
On page two, there's a couple of preferences, well, there's three references to the independent representative. It seemed, it seemed to me that this is section three under membership. It seemed to me that it might be easier on the English just to have the word chairperson in there.
That could be the case, I believe the chair is usually independent, but the chair doesn't need to be the independent representative?
True, I see what you mean.
Yeah, I don't actually know, but certainly under the national rules, the chair can be appointed from either the scheme member representatives or the employer representatives. So when you have, and there has to be at least four in total, so it has to be two and two, three and three, four and four, five and five or whatever. And you can, and some authorities do appoint a chair from within that grouping of two and two, three and three or whatever. But I don't know what the split is nationally, but I know quite a few do do that. But I also know that many do have independent chairperson such as myself. But that's a matter of local choice for the administering authority. As to the wording, I mean, I don't have strong feelings, so I'd better take your point Alan, but I suspect that Victoria's answer deals with it, you know.
Moving on then to three point two. The way it's worded now suggests that the scheme member representative needs to be nominated by an employer. Now, it seemed to me that that puts, bearing in mind the difficulty recruiting a member representative. It seemed to me that that put a hurdle in the way potentially. And it also seemed to me, what about people who are nominated by a trade union or even nominated by fellow members? So I would suggest that we change that and use the text that SAB, the Scheme Advisory Board, use in their template.
Chris, would you like to step forward?
Posted in the chat.
Thanks for that, Colin, Colin, yes, I'm happy to look at that. The intention of the terms of reference is that we can run an efficient board pragmatically. So we don't want to put any hurdles in that aren't necessary. I think the intention of three point two was to try and get the broadest membership we can. But in the end, membership, some, some representation is better than none, which is what we've got while we have a vacancy. So happy to look at the SAB wording directly and see if we can change it to that.
Okay, just food for thought, thank you. Thank you, Alan. Thank you, Victoria, any other comments or questions? I think I might have, give me a moment, okay. With regard to item six, talking about continuous improvement in our performance. I wondered, this is again food for thought, how, how we should be, whether we should be measuring this in some way? And if so, you know, how, how do we actually demonstrate that we're improving?
So one item would be through the training logs and ensuring that board representatives maintain their ability to be informed as to what is happening in the wider community as well as for Yorkshire Pension Fund specifically. I believe there are already training logs which state that in terms of measuring success per se. I would be grateful for any suggestions that any members have of how we could do this. It is something that the Scheme Advisory Board will likely issue some guidance on. And we'll take into consideration how other pension funds work alongside their local pension boards to ensure that both work as well as possible.
Thank you, Victoria, yeah, this is something we haven't done formally. I would say perhaps we should have, I think, given the history and the fact it was all new and people were learning, I think it was a bit theoretical personally. But so we've now got a very experienced board and experience on the board and experienced, I mean, Mike is new, but he's got an awful lot of experience within local government finance. So I think it's something we could do and I've got some thoughts about this, I won't go into them now, but there are. I've been involved with another board which does review its performance annually, it's not local government and, you know, perhaps. You know, I could feed that in, but let me have a think about that. But as Victoria suggests, if anybody else has any thoughts. But I think once a year, we should have some sort of process for reviewing our performance. And, but we need to be, I think the two things we need to have in mind is, one, we need to do it, it shouldn't be long-winded. It needs to be something that we can do efficiently, effectively, but, you know, without taking too much time, but it needs to be meaningful. And that's easier said than done, but if we try, I'm sure we can, we can come up with something. Okay, any other comments, Alan?
Yeah, item seven point five. I really have a problem with the grammar on seven point five B. And I posted on the chat there a suggestion for a slight rewording of B and C.
I think that those will be noted and unless there's some reason why they change the understanding and meaning, we are happy to update the draft.
Thank you, Alan, thank you, Victoria, okay.
On item eight, knowledge and skills. Eight point one. From our previous terms of reference, it's now as, as set out in the two thousand and four pensions act. Now, it seemed to me that we probably all have a reasonable smattering of knowledge about pensions law. And there's several of the acts, there's, Neil would probably know, but there's at least three, to my knowledge, probably more. If we, if we're really going to focus on the two thousand and four act, then perhaps we need some particular training on that. I wasn't quite sure why it was felt necessary to put that specific one into the terms of reference.
I'll admit that I do not know the answer to that question. I agree with you that there should be good knowledge of all of the acts and that that is the purpose of this board. Would you like to?
You just, you just covered it, Victoria, so yes, we should be having regard to all, all of the acts. And I can't tell you off the top of my head, while it's only referring to that singular act, it would, it would need to cover anything that's relevant. And also it would be fine for us to consider having some kind of run back through pension fund legislation through, you know, one of the training sessions later in the year.
So can we just delete that specific act off the end and revert to how we had it before?
I would be happy to just put a full stop after regulations.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, I think that would be better.
Did you say that was it, Alan, or anything else?
One moment, just have a quick look.
There's a question or comment from Andrew Felton, if you'd like to jump in, Andy.
Just wait to get to the next one, Alan, sorry. In terms of that, are we, are we clear, because I'm quite new to this as well, so apologies, but are we clear the extent of the knowledge that you need as board members or do we need to be clearer in defining that? Because that's quite a broad statement in terms of what that could cover in terms of all the legislation. And I'm sure you're not all expected to be experts in that. So I don't know whether there's a useful exercise there in being more explicit around some of what that might entail at a high level. Just to test that from a gap analysis point of view, I don't know whether we've done that as a team, sorry.
Yeah, in the, in the training review, we will do a gap analysis looking at training needs. But one of the other features of pension fund governance generally, and this applies to the investment subcommittee as well as the local pension board is because it's such a large, broad field of expertise, it is very difficult for anyone to hold all of that knowledge at one time. And therefore, what we do in the training plans is typically where there's a particular issue coming down the track, like a new type of fund we're considering launching. We will target training around that particular issue upstream of the decision hitting the investment subcommittee. And in that way, through targeted training, we keep the local pension board or the committee or whoever up to speed on things that are relevant at a point in time. And that's one of the strategies that helps to navigate the fact that everyone can't know everything. But the other thing we could do is think about legislation, have a look at the training plan and if there's any particular bits of legislation that are more relevant to what's going on over the coming year, we can target those and that's, that's one way of trying to navigate them.
Yeah, I was just thinking whether there's a separate session outside of formal, formal board with the committee itself just to establish here's the set of things that you need to know as a committee, are you satisfied between you that you have the various knowledge to cover that? Outside of the special stuff that might come up as we go forward, I don't know whether you'd find that useful as a board.
Yeah, I think that's a good point, Andrew. I mean, the SIP for knowledge and skills template has got some relevance here, although personally, I think that it's, it's, it's a bit unrealistic to expect board members to have, you know, the amount of knowledge that theoretically they're supposed to have. And if you go back to the original guidance note issued by the ministry when boards were set up. And I can turn it up, I've got it somewhere on a file, but it actually acknowledged that this was a complicated subject and there would be a learning curve for members and so on. And therefore, to expect, you know, members to be fully conversant with all aspects of the subject, I think frankly is unrealistic. I mean, as I said earlier, we've got a very experienced board, but I mean, I mean, all members now have experience. But Keith and Alan have been on the boards from the outset and I'm sure they both agree that, you know, we've all learned a lot in those, in that time. So it's, and I've been doing this subject for a long time and I still learn something every day. So, you know, it's a learning curve and as long as we keep a record and as long as we go that we, you know, there's evidence that we are capable of performing the role, which is to assist. Remember that, we have no decision-making powers. The board is just there to assist the committee and the administering authority. And as long as we can fulfill that, then I think we meet our obligations. Does that answer your question, Andrew, or not, really?
And sort of, I think what we might do, Chair, is take this offline and talk about it as a team in terms of how we might help position something and then maybe come separately for a conversation. And to see, because I don't want to do something for the sake of it, but it just feels like it might be something here, particularly with having new members coming on board. And potentially now with Mike and other people in the future.
Yes, okay, thank you. Okay, Victoria, anyway, does anybody else have any questions, Victoria, or comments?
I have two more comments.
All right, okay, and, okay, Alan, thank you. All right, okay, and, okay, Alan, thank you.
9.2, item D. The papers are distributed at least five clear working days before each meeting, except in exceptional circumstances. I personally struggle to get through the papers in the time provided. They're quite hefty packs of papers. I'm a slow reader. I would really appreciate more time.
Roughly, how much time do you think would be ideal for you, while still being reasonable for us to see them through the process here?
Well, I'd like 10 working days personally.
Shall we have a chat with Democratic Services about how feasible that is? And if there's any reason why we can't issue them 10 working days beforehand, let you know. Are you happy for us to keep the wording at five working days, but note the Warwickshire Pension Fund's preference for 10 working days as a separate piece?
Sorry, could you say that again? I missed that, Victoria.
So in our terms of reference, if we keep it at five clear working days, that if you like, is the minimum expectation. And yet noting Alan's reasonable comment that it takes
Okay, we've got the point, okay.
Make sure that we try and provide them 10 days in advance.
Okay. Well, I mean, you know, as I understand it, I mean, the board can comment on this, but the terms of reference are actually set by the administering authority. So I stand to be corrected by the legal people on that if I'm wrong. But I think it's the administering authority that sets these and it's for us to comment on them. But I don't think we can actually change them. You know, we can only make recommendations. I think that's my understanding. But again, I do stand to be corrected if I'm wrong.
I believe Jane has a comment to make. Sorry, and Chris.
Sorry, Jane, not you.
I need to intermit, no, I was just going to say that you're correct, Chair. I'm not correcting you. The administrative authority sets the terms of reference.
Thank you.
Just one question, as Victoria says, we can have a look at if we can do things earlier. Will those with Democratic Services see what's possible there? We also need to take stock of what we can physically administrate as officers. Because if there's more time on one side of a deadline, there's less on the other. We'll look at that and see what we can do.
Well, that strikes me as sort of a reasonable compromise. Keith, did you want to come in?
Yes, I just briefly, I don't want to be too clever about this, but frankly, I wouldn't mind if I got my papers five working days before. I mean, it'd be quite good. I mean, this time, for instance, I got my papers on Saturday morning. And as has been pointed out, it was a rather large pack. And so if we're just talking working days, that's not really, that's one and a bit.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, there are problems with the post at the moment because I think Helen asked us all, have we received them on Thursday? Because they were dispatched on Wednesday or whatever. And I replied saying I hadn't, but we had problems with the post and they would probably come the next day. And mine did. So I had a set of papers on Friday, but then I did have a second. Because I think Helen, then thinking that some people hadn't received them, arranged them to be resent. So I had the second set on Saturday. But we do, I think we have to accept that at the moment, we're living in very challenging times. But if the, and five working days is, to my knowledge, the standard, I think, within local government for papers to be distributed to committees and so on. So I think if the administrative authority wishes to stick to that, I mean, we probably have no alternative to accept it. But given that Chris has suggested, they will, Chris and Victoria have suggested, they will look at ways of making this easier in practice, then that would be good. And let's not forget Keith's last point, that, you know, he'd be happy if he got them in five working days even. So let's try and, let's try to actually act up a bit and see if we can get them a bit, bit, bit earlier, a bit sooner. And then try and keep everybody happy.
I think the trouble is I live in Warwickshire. That's the trouble, you see.
Chair, can I just make a quick point? Sorry, Sandy Felton. So I think electronically, the information was all sent out within five working days. But obviously, I appreciate there's a preference among yourselves for paper copies to work through, which can be easy to annotate if you're trying to make questions and stuff. And as Victoria and Chris said, we'll look at the admin processes and see what we can get out earlier. And we're still at the mercy of the postal systems, unfortunately. Ironically, that Warwickshire's slower than out of county, but it is what it is at the moment, unfortunately. And yeah, we'll try and, but as Chris said, there are, there's a lot of effort that goes into producing the papers as well. And sometimes when we're coming off the back of the investment, it is in the staff and pensions. Whilst we've got drafts there for them to change stuff and amalgamate things into that can take a bit of time and an hour.
I think, I think that's fair. And as you say, it is a preference. But I think whilst we're having these virtual meetings, I mean, to look at people and have papers, you either have to have paper copies or you have to have two screens. And if people, if board members don't have two screens, then there's a problem, a problem there. Apart from which, I mean, receiving 200 pages and reading 200 pages on a screen is not everybody's idea of fact. So, you know, or indeed, you know, practical. So whilst it's, I accept it adds to the difficulties. I personally, in the current circumstances, don't think it's unreasonable for board members to ask to have the papers in paper and have them with five working days. Because, you know, that's, that I think is reasonable. So I think whilst taking Andrew's point, I think it should be for the paper copies that we ought to be trying to meet the five working days at the least and hopefully doing a bit better.
Thank you.
Did you say you had two points, Alan? And that was only one? Have you one last point to make or?
I'm suggesting a slightly alternative wording to item 10.2. Again, I've put that on the chat.
All right.
It's, it seemed a bit hard to understand, that's all.
Okay, right. If anybody, if nobody else has any comments on the terms of reference, we'll move on to the review of the triennial evaluation. I'm not sure who's going to do that, but we talked about it quite a bit. So hopefully we can do this quite quickly. Timing's rolling on.
Hello, Chair. Yeah, it's, it's me. I'm great. We undertook a review of the triennial evaluation and that involved looking at several parts of the process, data, engagement, assumptions, funding strategy and final results. What I've done in the report is put down areas of improvement when necessary. And you can see, for example, we talked about iConnect and improved engagement with employers and that type of thing. I'm happy to report as it is. And if anybody's got any comments on it, I'm pleased to hear them.
Thank you. Board members? It looks as though we can move on to the next item. Right, let's do that. Thank you, Neil. The next item is investments update. That's Victoria, by the way.
Yes, it is, Chair. So the key items here are that there were no new fund launches this quarter from Border to Coast. And we did not change any of our other external fund managers. Therefore, the investment strategy is relatively unchanged over the quarter. We liaised with Border to Coast on shaping the development of the funds in their pipeline. As has been previously noted during the risk registers, the value of equities as well as other investment assets have been affected by a volatile market. And these are going to be reflected in each quarter's performance reporting that the Investment Subcommittee looks at. In terms of the voting record, this is something that we do now report on and we didn't use to. We have a segregated account with Border to Coast, which means that they are able to vote directly on our behalf. And they feedback how they have voted and where they have voted against a resolution. They are willing to give additional information on why they did this. The Investment Subcommittee sometimes look at this information. As also previously mentioned, we have introduced a climate change policy. Cash flow is being closely monitored due to not only COVID, but due to the fact that our contributions currently are close to netting out the payments made. And therefore, we are in a nicely balanced position, but wish to remain on the right side of the ability to stay cash flow neutral or positive. As Chris mentioned earlier, the Multi-Asset Credit Fund is something that is going to be launched in 2021. And we are receiving updates from Border to Coast on how that is coming along. There was a slight postponement due to volatile markets and ensuring that the proper regulations, regulatory authority is provided by the FCA prior to the fund launch. This will go to the FCA in December and the timing of the fund launch will depend on that. In terms of other fund progress, the Global Property Fund is likely to launch in 2022 and the UK Property Fund in 2023. However, these dates are susceptible to changes depending on our ability to work together as partner funds with Border to Coast to create funds that meet our partner funds' needs. We've also been doing training, as you're aware, on responsible investment and environmental, social and governance, reflecting what our, what our expectations are and particularly focusing on how we want to monitor the position. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Board members? Nothing that I can see. Thank you. You mentioned voting. I believe we use Manifest as advisors on voting. Is that correct? That's a private company?
I believe that we no longer do so now that our equities are with Border to Coast. Border to Coast use Rubico.
Oh, that's right. That's right. Of course they do. Of course they do. Yes, you're correct. I did know that. Thank you for correcting me. Excellent. Thank you. Okay, thank you, Victoria. So we'll move on. And the next item then is the minutes of our previous meeting, which was held back in February before everything started to happen. They are there for you. Any comments? I don't know how we do it these days, but normally I'd say happy for me to sign the minutes. So I can sign them here, but nobody will see them except Mrs Bray. So I don't know how much point that is in that. Perhaps they'll send me a copy in the post and I'll sign them and send them back. But given it to Mrs Bray, I'm sure she'd be really interested, you know.
Chair, we've got two options for the minutes. I can either send you them over and you can sign them electronically and send them back to me. Or I can send them out to you in the post with a stamped addressed envelope to return them back to us. It's entirely up to you.
Well, I'm in your hands. If I understood what signing them electronically means, if you, if you mean just typing my name at the bottom, that's fine. My scanner doesn't work at the moment. It seems to be a bit, I do have a scanner, but it's playing up. I can photograph things and I'll do whatever, whatever you want me to do, Jane, you know. Yeah, okay. So the board members are happy for me to sign. And then we have basically for information and or comment, the minutes of the FIC, the Pension Fund Investments Subcommittee, and then the review of the Staff and Pensions Committee, which we haven't had previously. So it's good, I think, to see that at last. And I did note that in the FIC, I think it is, that they have, they do now receive our minutes. So they receive our papers. So I think, or is it the Staff and Pension, I'm not sure which. But I think that that's certainly a step in the right direction that we're seeing each other's minutes respectively. So we'll take them in order. First of all, the wonderfully named PFISC papers. Any comments on those? If not, we'll go on to the Staff and Pensions Committee, same question. In which case, it only leaves me to ask, does anybody have any other business? Well, if not, just thank you all very much for attending and thank the officers for, you know, being succinct. And in particular, can I, can I also thank Keith, considering, you know, your issues this morning, and Parminda, both with your ladywise. And I'm sure I speak on behalf of everybody when we give you our very best wishes for both of them.
Thank you, Chair.
So if there's, if there's nothing else, thank you all for attendance and I'll declare the meeting closed and goodbye and look after yourselves.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith.
Thank you, Chair.
I hope you enjoyed it, Mike. I hope you found it interesting.
It was.